We'll call a meeting of the City Council of Oregon and state that the notice for this meeting was duly posted. There is a quorum of council here, everyone's here except Councilwoman Ford who is out of town. Sergeant Cox is gonna leave us in our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good, thank you all. I have a number of proclamations tonight to present, but there's one that's not on here that I wanted to mention. You know, the city is embarking upon a program, we're one of two cities in the state of Texas that are competing for the America-
All-American.
All-American City. And we'll be going to Denver in June to compete for that, and we're asking our partners, meaning our businesses, our companies, individuals within Missouri City to help us fund that trip. And this morning, Councilman Maroulis and Councilman Emery and I were fortunate enough to be at a breakfast that was honoring Dr. Burson who is retiring from Kelsey Sebo. And one of the things that I was thrilled to get was a check for $2,500 from Kelsey Sebo for our program, so. And they just said everybody can match theirs. Yeah, Step Up Methodist, you know, all those others, but anyway, that was a, that's a great thing, that they are partners. And they were so impressed in hearing about the program at my State of the City that they wanted to get involved and be, and they really want to get involved even more so. But one of the first recognitions I have says that it's awarded to Missouri City Middle School Principal Jerry Cameraman. Come on up here Jerry. And it is in recognition of her earning the U.S. Department of Defense Patriot Employer Award in honor of her exceptional support of staff members serving in the Guard and the Reserve. So she's not just a, you know, high school, a middle school principal, she does other things as well. So we wanted to honor her tonight, and we're very proud of what you've done.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just wanted to say Principal Cameraman will be having a number of her young folks, as well as her going to the All-American City to showcase the great things that they're doing with our youth.
Very good, thank you.
I'm providing tonight to our health and fitness fair, 5:30.
Yeah, right, they do, they have a great health and fitness fair. This next proclamation now-
Mayor?
Yes?
This is for the Golden Tree Award.
But I don't have a presentation for it. Come on up here Paul, so you're taking me out of order.
This is Paul Bunyan by the way now.
Now, Paul Bunyan's coming behind him.
I got the haircut just for you.
Yes, he did, you noticed the haircut, right?
There's Paul Bunyan, that's Paul Bunyan.
Well, Mayor and Council and honored guests that we have here today, we want to honor a family that truly loves Missouri City. They donate to our parks, our greenlands, they help with the trash off repeatedly, picking up trash within the parks. And so let me just tell you something about Tom and Regina Nichols. They have donated funds to parks and green space improvements, sponsoring the Missouri City Tree Challenge, along with the Memorial Tree Challenge. If you all are not aware, if you donate a tree, they match it. As a result of the last four years of them doing this, we have 323 new trees within eight parks within the city of Missouri City. Get on my hand please. They have committed to continue their donations through spring of 2017, so it hasn't stopped, so you all still have time to get a tree, so they can match it, okay? Because we like those trees in the park. But we are very pleased to present to them, because you all work from home, we weren't gonna give you a yard sign, okay? So we're gonna give you this book with plants, and we know you all love them, in addition to the plaque. And we cannot thank you enough, from Missouri City Green, along with the City of Missouri City. And if you all would like to say anything, feel free please.
Either or.
Or both.
Do a tree and we'll match it wherever you want, see? And Paul does all the hard work, and y'all do all the sponsorship of it.
We try, we try.
Keep it informed in front of everybody.
Thank you all so much. We really appreciate all your efforts for us to keep us a green city.
You bet.
There, while we got that Platinum Award. Really?
Are you ready everybody? One, two, three. One, two.
You can knock his head?
Yeah, he got yours though. He got the top of yours.
That's the clever one.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, that's very good. Outstanding. And a lot of those trees are over in McNaulton Park, so if you're ever over there and you see them all, that's the reason. This next proclamation says that whereas Missouri City Underground Utility Infrastructure is jeopardized by unintentional damage due to failure to call 811, the national call number to have underground lines located prior to digging, known as "call before you dig." You've seen those signs, right? Whereas every year lives are threatened and property is damaged when people fail to locate underground utilities before beginning projects that involve digging and excavation. Scott, most of that's our contractors who do that. Whereas calling 811 provides professional excavators and homeowners a simple way to reach the Texas Excavation Notification System to request utility line locations at the intended dig site. And whereas CenterPoint Energy serves the citizens of Missouri City at no cost to the taxpayers, spreading the message that safe digging is a shared responsibility and encourages citizens to always call 811 before digging. And whereas making a simple call to 811 in advance of any digging project like planting trees, waiting the required amount of time, respecting the marked lines by maintaining visual definition throughout the course of the excavation and digging with care around the marks will save time and money. Now therefore, I Allen Owen on behalf of the Council and the citizens of Missouri City do hereby proclaim May 2016 as Safe Digging Month and encourage our excavators throughout Missouri City to always call 811 before digging. Safe excavation is no accident. And we have, where's my CenterPoint? Yes, yes, we've got CenterPoint here tonight to accept this, so.
Thank you.
Want to say anything?
I think if you just call before you dig.
Public safety.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
I told her before the meeting I played golf with a guy that was so bad in Big Digger Divots that I put that sign on his golf bag, "Call Before You Dig." All right. This next one says that whereas the city of Missouri City includes a thriving community of older Americans, like me, who deserve recognition for their contributions and sacrifices to ensure a better life for future generations. And whereas the city of Missouri City recognizes that older adults are trailblazers advocating for themselves, their peers, and their communities, paving the way for future generations. And whereas the city of Missouri City is committed to raising awareness about issues facing older Americans and helping all individuals to thrive in communities of their choice for as long as possible. Whereas we appreciate the value of inclusion and support in helping older adults successfully contribute to and benefit from their community. And whereas our community can provide opportunities to enrich the lives of individuals for all ages by promoting and engaging in activity, wellness, and social inclusion, emphasizing home and community-based services and support independent living, ensuring community members of all ages benefit from the contributions and experience of older adults. Now therefore, I Allen Owen on behalf of the City Council do proclaim May of 2016 to be Older Americans Month, and I urge every citizen to take time this month to engage with our older citizens through enjoyable social interactions such as sports, games, contests, and other forms of play. We have someone here, from our Senior Meals on Wheels, which is a very important program that Fort Bend offers, and it won that the city of Missouri City is very proud to help support, so. On behalf of the city, thank you. Say something?
Just thank you so much. I represent Fort Bend Seniors Meals on Wheels, we serve about 1,300 meals every single day. The majority of those go to homebound seniors, the remainder of those gather at congregate sites around Fort Bend and Waller County, and they enjoy dominoes, and games, and arts, and exercise, and all sorts of things. So we have some wonderful older Americans in our community, and urge everybody to get involved.
Very good, thank you. And I don't know how many of you are aware that this year marks the 60th birthday of Missouri City. It was incorporated in 1956. There were people here prior to 1956, but we were not incorporated until 1956, and so we're celebrating this year on our 60th birthday. We have a group of people who are also celebrating their 60th birthday. And let me just say that they are, not by age of the members, but I have to be careful here because my wife is in this organization, by age of the organization, they are the oldest civic organization in Missouri City in that they were started the same month that the city was incorporated. So they are also 60 years old this year, and there are a whole bunch of them here. And let me just say that Mary Berger has been in it 40 years, Virginia Hodges has been in it 36 years, Jane Thompson has been in it 37 years.
Jane Owen?
Right? Jane Owen's been in it a few years. She was in it in 95, so, yes, I know, she's, she's been in it shorter than a lot of these people, but, you know, this organization goes all the way back, their first meeting place was on Bull Lane, when Bull Lane was actually the first street in Missouri City, long before this building was ever built. And that's where City Hall was originally over by the Catholic Church, and so this organization met over there, and so we're very proud of the fact that they have sustained 60 years of continued success. And let me just say that they, they do a lot for our community, they give scholarships to kids, they do in service projects, but we're here tonight, so. All right ladies, here we go. On May 2nd, 1956, three months after Missouri City was incorporated, a group of ladies met at the home of Mrs. E.A. McBain in Missouri City to discuss the formation of a club. Mrs. McBain acted as chairman and Mrs. O.F. Carroll as a secretary. Ms. Carroll made the motion to organize a club, and Ms. Norma Swell moved that it be called the Women's Club. It was decided that the projects would be varied to include gardening, homemaking, civic, and other interests. And whereas the constitution bylaws were adopted, the Athea was selected as the club flower, and friendship, loyalty, and service was chosen as the club motto. And whereas during the early club years, meetings were held in the clubhouse donated by Dr. Hampton Robinson. The Boy Scouts, City Council, and Chamber of Commerce also used that same building. And whereas for two years, club members served dinners for the Chamber of Commerce to encourage attendance at their meetings and to raise money for the club's projects. And whereas in July of 1959, the club was asked to submit names for the new Fort Bend District High School. Ms. Vera Strong suggested the name John Foster Dulles, in honor of an American statesman. The club agreed, and after the total community ballot, the name was accepted. So if y'all want to know where the high school name came from, it came from these ladies. Now therefore, I Allen Owen on behalf of the City Council and all the citizens of Missouri City do hereby proclaim May 2nd, 2016, as the Women's Club Day in the city of Missouri City, Texas, Fort Bend County. So ladies, come on up.
Okay. Get the rest.
Yep.
I'm tall. I'm tall.
Okay, ready everybody? One, two, three. Take one more. All right, ready? One, two, three.
Y'all got this?
I hope so.
Do I? I know, she showed us her present this year. I think they just rotate, don't you just? We're gonna be present once the volunteers, y'all remember Valerie? Y'all remember Valerie? Valerie and this lady both were longtime city employees.
And Mary Berger.
And Mary Berger, that's right.
Yeah.
Got some former Missouri City employees, huh? And yes? Yeah, James, you led us, James, didn't you? Anyway, that's a great organization, and they will be having their birthday party tomorrow night, and having a cake and all that good stuff, and I'll be there. Bill, will you be there?
I'll be there.
Bill will be there. Huh?
Yes.
Now Bill, why am I supposed to take pictures when you're a better cameraman than I am?
Who told you to take pictures?
I don't know, but I'm asking you two now, tomorrow night.
We'll swap out.
Okay. All right. Now, as I said earlier, this whole week, we're honoring our employees in some way or another. There's functions every single day this week. Y'all make hamburgers today?
No sir, not today, that's tomorrow.
Tomorrow, hamburger's made tomorrow by the leadership team. Hot dogs, hamburgers, all that kind of stuff.
Best ever.
Huh?
They will be the best ever.
Barbecue Friday, right? Friday? Okay, Public Works? All right. This proclamation says that whereas Americans are served every day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels, these unsung heroes do the work that keeps our city, state, and nation working efficiently. And whereas public employees take not only jobs, but oaths to protect and serve. And whereas many public servants, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, Public Works employees, Border Patrol officers, embassy employees, healthcare professionals, and others risk their lives every day in service to people of Missouri City, the United States, and around the world. Whereas public servants include teachers, doctors, scientists, building inspectors, food inspectors, parks and recreation professionals, nurses and safety inspectors, computer technicians, and countless other occupations. Day in and day out, they provide the diverse services our community demands of their government with quality, efficiency, responsiveness, and integrity. And whereas without these public servants at every level, communities would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Now therefore, I Allen Owen on behalf of the City Council do hereby recognize and proclaim to all citizens and set my seal here too, that May 1st through 7th, 2016 is Public Service Recognition Week. Therefore, I encourage all of our citizens to recognize the accomplishments and the contributions of government employees at all levels, federal, state, county, and city. City Manager Snipes is gonna come accept this on behalf of all of the employees.
We're so fortunate to have great employees. As I've said many times before, it's not many professions that touch the day-to-day lives of people, and we're very fortunate, in my opinion, to have the best workforce, not only in the state, but in the entire country. And we this week celebrate that excellence, and we look forward to recognizing them for the great work that they do on a day-to-day basis. Thank you very much again.
You bet, thank you. Okay, Scott. This proclamation says that whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. Whereas the support of an understanding and an informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewer, streets, and highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of the citizens of Missouri City greatly depends on these facilities and services. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I Allen Owen on behalf of the Council and the citizens of Missouri City do hereby proclaim the week of May 15th through the 21st as National Public Works Week in the city of Missouri City, Texas. And I call upon all of our citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public service works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. So Assistant Manager Scott?
I like you so much, I like you. Take down one of them. Wait a minute, you said one more. One more.
Not much to say, other than we appreciate the opportunity to be of service to everybody. That's what we get paid to do, and that's what really makes Public Works people day worthwhile. So if y'all need us, give us a call.
And last but not least, this proclamation says that there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including 103 sworn members of our own Missouri City Police Department. On average, one law enforcement officer is killed in the line of duty somewhere in the United States every 61 hours. Whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, more than 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty. The names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial, which was dedicated in 1991 in Washington DC. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored, and the names of the officers newly engraved on the memorial will be formally dedicated to a National Law Enforcement Memorial Fund's 28th Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of Friday, May 13th, 2016. Whereas the Missouri City Police Department's annual police officers memorial ceremony will be held Wednesday, May 18th, at 7:00 PM, and is part of National Police Week. Whereas May 15th is designated as National Peace Officers Memorial Day with federal law PL 103-322, directing that all flags be flown at half-staff on that day in honor of fallen officers and their families. Now therefore, I Allen Owen, Mayor, and on behalf of the City Council and all the citizens of Missouri City, do call patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week, May 15th through the 21st, as National Police Week, with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all citizens can join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to our communities, and in doing so have established for themselves an inevitable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Our further call upon all citizens to observe May 15th of this year as National Peace Officers Memorial Day, in honor of those enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community, or have become disabled in the performance of duties, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. And let me just say that, and I'm gonna knock over it, we're very fortunate in this city that we have never lost an officer in the line of duty, and I hope we never do. I was fortunate enough the year before last to attend the National Police Officers Memorial Ceremony in Washington DC. And if you've never seen that, it's an amazing ceremony with probably 100,000 people gathered with candles honoring the people whose names were being placed on that memorial. So I encourage you all to join us when we do our memorial ceremony. It means a lot to these guys in the back, back here, to know that you're there supporting them, and again, to congratulate them that none of them have ever been faced with telling some family member that their fellow officer was killed in the line of duty. I just say guys, every single day, you know, that's something that they face. Unfortunately, in this world today, every car they stop, every person they talk to, they risk the fact that that person could have a gun and takes it out on their lives. It's unfortunate that happens. So, you know, these people leave home every day, they leave their families, their husbands, their wives, their children, not knowing whether they're gonna be back that afternoon or that night. They live with that every day. So when you, you know, when you see them, walk up to them and say thank you for what you do. Not only these guys, our firefighters are just as important to us, but these guys are on that street every day protecting your lives, so we're glad to honor them. Chief?
Look good, here, look good. Ready everybody? One, two, three. One, two.
Well, like the mayor said, we've been very blessed that we've never lost anyone in the line of duty. We've had two officers passed in service while they were working for the city of Missouri City, but we're thankful every day that every one of these men and women that proudly serve go home to their families. So we honor them on May the 18th at 7:00 PM, and there's an inscription there in Washington, DC that says that the men and women inscribed on the wall, it's not how they died that made them heroes, it's how they lived. And I will tell you that I have the privilege and honor of serving with heroes every day in this Missouri City Police Department. Again, thank you Mayor.
Thank you. One other thing, and I'll just mention to everybody, that I was very fortunate this past Monday to deliver my State of the City address, talking about all the accolades that the city of Missouri City has achieved over the past year. And if you were unable to attend it, it is now posted out there on our website, you can see the entire presentation, and you can fast-forward it if you don't hear me. You can turn it off if you don't want to hear me, you can mute it. But it's out there, and it really, Stacy and her team did an excellent job in putting together a program that really highlights what Missouri City is about, and allowed me to, again, stand up there and take credit for what everybody on this diocese does for every day, and that's this council and its everyday activities and staff. So I just want to say thank you to Stacy and her group, and to the staff for making us all look good, you know? We just sit up here and do what we need to do, Stacy. Item four on the agenda is public comments. I did not have anyone sign up to make public comments. Item five is staff reports, city manager announcements.
Thank you so much Mayor. Let me again, thank you for tonight recognizing our exceptional workforce with the proclamation. Our employees are truly, I'll consider to be the best of the best, and it's my honor to work with them on a day-to-day basis. Their pride professionalism and their commitment to public service, I believe, are unmatched. This week, I want to thank our employee recognition committee for putting together a great Public Service Recognition Week that began today and would end on this Friday, so I want to thank them for putting these great events together for our employees, to assure that our employees are truly, fully enjoy the activities of this week.
to attend it, it is now posted out there on our website. You can see the entire presentation and you can fast forward it if you don't hear me. You can turn it off if you don't want to hear me. You can mute it. But it's out there and it really, Stacy and her team did an excellent job in putting together a program that really highlights what Missouri City is about and allowed me to, again, stand up there and take credit for what everybody on this diocese does for every day. And that's this council and its everyday activities and staff. So I just want to say thank you to Stacy and her group and to the staff for making us all look good, you know? We just sit up here and do what we need to do, Stacy. Item four on the agenda is public comments. I did not have anyone sign up to make public comments. Item five is staff reports, city manager announcements.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Let me again, thank you for tonight recognizing our exceptional workforce with the proclamation. Our employees are truly, I'll consider to be the best of the best and it's my honor to work with them on a day-to-day basis. Their pride professionalism and their commitment to public service, I believe, are unmatched. And this week, I want to thank our employee recognition committee for putting together a great public service recognition week that began today and would end on this Friday. So I want to thank them for putting these great events together for our employees. To assure that our employees are truly, fully enjoy the activities of this week, all non-emergency city hall officers will be closed on Wednesday from 11:30 to 1:30 for our employee service awards, where we recognize our employees from one year all the way up to 30 years, and they'll have an opportunity to be recognized at that time. So I want to make sure that council is aware of that as well as our annual employee family, employee cook-off, which is going to be on that Friday in the afternoon. This week, I would like to remind everyone that HCC will be hosting the breaking new ground ceremony for the new Texas Parkway campus. That'll be this Wednesday, May 4th at 10:00 AM. Due to the recent rains, the officials have decided to host a ceremony on the city hall plaza. So I wanted to make sure you were aware of that. As you all know, the construction is underway for this 69,000 square feet facility site and it's expected to be completed by April of 2017. As we receive project updates associated with this facility, we will provide them and we'll have updates on our website. I want everyone, if they could, to please mark their calendars for the annual police memorial service, which will be this Wednesday as well, May 18th, I'm sorry, coming up on May 18th at 7:00 PM at the Public Safety Headquarters Protector's Plaza. Join us in honoring the courage and selfless sacrifices made by the officers in the line of duty. Their tireless efforts keep our streets safe and the community one of the best in the nation. I want to applaud them again for all that they do to ensure that Missouri City is a safe city. Lastly, council, the city has received a number of inquiries regarding the Texas Parkway Mobility Project that is being managed by TechStop. As we've shared with the public that has called us, that road, Texas Parkway, is a TechStop road. To address the question, staff has shared the TechStop project information with HOAs as well as the media this week. And we have also posted details on the city website and social media outlets. We have a meeting scheduled on tomorrow with TechStop. We've had conversations, staff and I, with the TechStop representatives. They've assured us that today, tomorrow during early voting, the construction will cease and as well as during the election day, construction will cease. But we're going to be talking to them about future coordination as we move forward. Some of the inquiries received was related to access to the community center. We have emphasized that no right-of-ways are affected by the construction and we have provided a list of alternative polling locations in the event that they want to know that information. Lastly, Mayor, our junior tennis program has yet another award. Congratulations are in order for the junior tennis program participants who played well at this weekend's Little More Sectional Tournament in San Antonio. Little More is a tournament that gives junior players the opportunity to gauge their ability against players who are the same age. It's a fun competitive tournament. We have four players earned third, fourth and second place trophies in their respective divisions. These junior players are now qualified to compete for the Little More Regional in Dallas on May 28th and 29th and in Arlington on September 17th and 18th. So I wanted to recognize our young folks for representing Missouri City well. That concludes my report, Mayor.
Very good. I would be remiss, and I meant to say that earlier, our prayers and thoughts are with the family of that young man, the coach at Stafford High School, that baseball coach that died unexpectedly. And it's a shock for any family and the team especially. He was a very young man and it's unfortunate that things like that happen. But our thoughts and prayers are with their family and with their school as those kids deal with that today, with their grievance counselors and such trying to get through it. That's a difficult thing anytime that a child is lost. But anyway, all right. Item five, six on the agenda is a consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed?
Motion.
Councilman Rulis made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Emery made the second. All in favor, motion carries. Item seven are public hearings and related actions. There are none. There are no public hearings. Item eight, there are no appointments tonight. Item nine are authorizations. Nine A, is to consider authorizing the execution of a contract with, is it ImagineNet? That was called ImagineNet Consulting LLC?
ImageNet.
ImageNet. ImageNet Consulting LLC for the lease of copier equipment and for the purchase of maintenance services through the Texas Department of Information Resources Cooperative Purchasing Program.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
This is to replace, we have several copiers across the city that are at end of life. Some of them are out of order. They don't even work now. This is an agreement that has been worked on through my office and the office of the city attorney and with the vendor, working through the DIR contract to lease these contracts as fair market leases for three years, 36 months. The total monthly cost for these six copiers is $2985, $2,985.76 a month. A three-year lease is $107,487.36.
Fair motion. Councilman Wyatt made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Emery made the second. Is there discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor, motion carries.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Nine B is consider authorizing the execution of a contract with Software House, Software House International for broadcast and streaming equipment and services through the Texas Department of Information Resources Cooperative Purchasing Program. Yes, ma'am.
Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity. This solution is necessary to facilitate more efficient and effective MCTV operations as the current production solution that we have in place is obsolete. Staff has worked with purchasing and IT to evaluate several solutions, including our current provider, which is Granicus. And we've determined that Swaggit, a sole-source solution, is in the best interest of the city for the long term. It offers an all-inclusive video package for high-definition recording, indexing, posting and archiving of city council and other board committee city meetings that will help us to provide greater transparency and community engagement and to improve operational efficiencies. The package includes a mobile app for an HD-PIC portal, which will fully integrate the city's social media platforms and provides a streaming portal to give residents a consistent location to see media broadcasting around the clock, as well as providing us the opportunity to send push notifications. And this is critical, especially since we're about to enter hurricane season on January 1st. And when we have special programs like the All-America City Program or State of the City or public safety initiatives, we can push this information out to residents or a wider range of residents. Currently, we use Granicus and we have a standard definition remote system with an SDI remote camera, after which the index meeting is uploaded to our website with Civic Plus. And while this system has proven to be useful, it's not without fault. One of our most concerning issues is the low resolution. It's 320 by 240, which is smaller than what you see on the face of your cell phones. And it also has results that are grainy and pixelated when we enlarge them. So for instance, when we're doing a special project, we can't pull pictures or footage from the current system that we have because when you enlarge it, you can't really see it very well. Other Granicus related issues are poor customer service and expensive training costs and the inability to utilize the low-resolution footage for other video projects, like I was just saying. Also, Granicus does not have an HD solution in place right now and they won't until later in the year. But when it does become available, it's going to cost us more money. Swaggit offers a larger video, up to 70% larger, and flash video format. It also uses HTML5 for streaming to mobile devices such as your iPhones and your Androids. And it's the only government streaming provider that has developed its own content delivery network, ensuring quick and reliable connections for constituents. So for instance, if we start to utilize Swaggit, when the meeting is over, we'll be able to upload it within minutes. Whereas now, it takes a couple of hours because we have to transition it through several systems. The cost savings is also significant. The city currently pays a monthly service fee of $1,254.87 per month for the use of the Granicus software and encoder. And that fee would increase $100 per month if the city opted to move forward with a standard definition upgrade from Granicus. This company, again, has said it will not have HD technology available until later this year. Swaggit's software and HD encoder would cost us $750 per month and the service offers free training and a 24-hour help desk. And IT has noted that they are prepared to provide the required bandwidth to have this HD upgrade.
Just tell me, is this going to, is this going to improve the quality of our MCTV?
Most definitely. Most definitely.
Yeah. And that's one of the major things that we've had is that everybody has to turn their sets up real high because the quality of the sound and the picture is not what it really should be. So that's great. I mean, a lot of people are depending on that now.
Okay.
You have a motion?
Yes, sir.
You like that, huh?
Oh, yeah. I can't, I want to be the first to get the notification.
Thank you.
All right. Councilman Rulis made the motion. Who made the second? Councilman Wyatt made the second. All those in favor, motion carries. Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you, sir.
What are you going to do with your spare time?
I won't have it.
Resting now.
I have more projects, right?
Yeah, she's resting now that my State of the City is finished.
No, I'm not resting, but I just wanted to say that.
You're ready for All-American City.
Yes, yes, sir. We have gotten such great feedback on the work that we've done in the city for the past 60 years. And while the State of the City video is great, we have a 60th anniversary slideshow that have photo, that has photos from throughout the history of our city. And if you haven't had a chance to take a look at it, you should.
Very nice.
Done a lot of remarkable things here, so.
Very good. Thank you. Item nine C is consider authorizing the execution of a strategic partnership agreement between the city of Missouri City, Texas and the Sienna Plantation Management District to provide for a mixed-use development on a 33.23 acre tract of land located north of Watts Plantation Road, south of the Fort Bend Parkway, west of Oyster Creek and east of Sienna Parkway. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Who made the motion? Councilman Wyatt made the motion.
Of course.
Councilman Smith made the second. Mayor Protem Smith made the second. Is there a discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in, did you have something, E. Joyce?
I was just going to describe the proposed agreement. I'm sure everyone here is aware we've seen it a few times. We've had two public hearings on it. But this is the strategic partnership agreement for the area that's just west, I apologize, east of Sienna Parkway. It is in order to allow the city to, once this land has been to Sanext, it allows the city to basically impose a sales tax on this property.
Is this, is this the property connected with the HCC?
Uh-uh.
This is south of that.
It's the south of that.
I just want to give a preamble to it.
I got you. All right. There was a motion by Mayor Protem, no, by Councilman Wyatt and a second by Mayor Protem Smith. All those in favor, motion carries. Item 10A, your ordinance is?
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas to Sanexting, a 33.07 acre tract of land located west of Sienna Parkway, south of Oyster Creek Farms Residential Subdivision, east of Sienna Village of Anderson Springs Residential Subdivision, and north of Sienna Springs Boulevard from its municipal boundaries and providing a savings and severability clause.
And this is the second and final reading of this ordinance. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Mayor Protem Smith made the motion. Councilman Wyatt made the second. Is there discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to point out a few things regarding this property. This is kind of the culmination of getting HCC to Texas Parkway. In addition, this property would provide benefits for people that live on the southeast end of our city because there would be a complex there headed by the county. There's another annex that would exist in that same area. In addition to, I don't know why some people voted against this, but I just want to state my reasons. When we get the largest project in the history of Texas Parkway, and this is a part of that happening. And throughout this election, I keep hearing, what are we doing for Texas Parkway? So I always want to make sure that that's pointed out.
If you don't mind me, Councilman, to kind of piggyback on to that, we had a District B quarterly meeting last week.
Yeah.
And Dr. Madeline Varellio presented to the attendees the benefits of HCC to the Texas Parkway corridor. And it was well-received. We, as we all know, Texas Parkway has been the whipping child for those who aspire to be in public service for the last four, five or six years. And there's always been language about change in what we're going to do for Texas Parkway. But when you deal with somewhere in the neighborhood of $29.6 million dollars of construction and development on this corridor, it seems to me that's a positive. As a result of this, other things are going to happen. It's already mushroomed. Commissioner Grady Prestige will announce, if he hasn't already, that he's going to have improved the library over there. It's going to be three floors. He's going to retrofit the library to accommodate Wi-Fi and some of those other amenities that the library doesn't have to offer at this point. In addition to that, we've talked openly about the revamping of the city hall complex, which will accommodate, which add additional amenities and also add to the aesthetics of city hall. This is a plus. This is something that we've been wanting for quite some time. All along, we've been saying that Texas Parkway may not be a part of the way Highway 6 will look, but it will be proud, we'll be proud of it eventually because Texas Parkway is a conduit between 288 and the Beltway. 26,030 cars travel on Texas Parkway commuting to there.
By being resurfaced.
Yes, yes. To work on, to commute to work on workdays. So this is a, this is a plus. We have, although we haven't moved as fast as anyone would want to move, but these are the things that will make a community better. And I applaud those who voted for it. And hopefully, that will be a better understanding as to why Houston Community College will benefit the Texas Parkway Courtyard Corridor.
Very good. Any other comments? Not? We'll vote. All those in favor, all opposed, motion carries. All right. Item 10B.
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas authorizing the mayor to execute on the city secretary to attest, respectively, the development agreement between the city of Missouri City and Sienna Johnson North LP for the development of property previously owned by the Houston Community College system, providing for severability and providing for other matters relating to the subject.
All right. This is the first of two readings. Scott, you got something?
Just a few quick items, Mayor and council, to point out on this. One second. Basically, this is the same concept that we've done with strategic partnership agreements or development agreements between Riverstone and the city, between Sienna Plantation and the city on this. The developer will develop the property in accordance with the land use plan included in the agreement, primarily single-family residential units between zoning classification R1 or 6 on that. All construction will be performed in accordance with city codes, including the infrastructure design manual and the international building code. Parkland will be dedicated in accordance with Missouri City codes. Traffic impact analysis will be conducted and there will be a 30-year term on this. So basically, it's the same concept that has been successful for us in other areas of our extraterritorial jurisdiction.
That has worked well.
That has worked well.
Yeah, for many years and continues to. So, very good. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Councilman Emery made the motion. Councilman Wyatt made the second. Any discussion?
This is a little bit of that old HCC land?
Yeah, yes.
I just want to make sure in case somebody wants to vote again.
It is. All right. All those in favor, all opposed, motion carries. 10C.
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas authorizing the mayor to execute on the city secretary to attest, respectively, the development agreement between the city of Missouri City and Sienna 325 LP for the development of Missouri City and Sienna 325 LP for the development of property located along Watts Plantation Road for mixed uses, providing for severability and providing for other matters relating to the subject.
And this is the other piece across the street. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Wyatt made the motion. Mayor Protim Smith made the second. Is there discussion?
These folk going to be shopping in the city, don't they?
Yes, and paying sales tax in the city.
That's what I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, this will be in the city. All those in favor? Yeah, huh?
One thing I might add is that I asked the city attorney to let me know, is there, is it possible for the mayor to poll the voting?
Is it possible for the mayor to poll?
Is that appropriate?
Certainly, you could do that. A member could ask to have the votes polled. If I may add one thing, though, on this mixed-use piece, this is mixed uses as defined by the Ninth Amendment of the current Sienna Plantation Development Agreement, and that does allow multifamily.
Right. Well, I implore you to, because I'm at a loss here. This seems to be a project that everybody's in accord with, but if there is something there that I don't know about, then I ask you to poll the council to ask why they voted the way they did.
Okay.
Oh, if I may, when you said poll, polling generally means either yes or no.
Voice.
Yes or no, yeah.
Voice, yes or no.
Not necessarily.
Not a reason.
Correct.
Voice. They express it if they want to.
Certainly, but.
That's their right, so. So I will poll. Councilman Rulis?
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Protim Smith?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
No.
Okay. The motion carries. Item 10D.
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas, authorizing the mayor to execute and the city secretary to attest, respectively, the development agreement between the city of Missouri City and Sienna 325 LP for the development of property located along Watts Plantation Road for residential uses, providing for severability and providing for other matters relating to the subject.
Read that. Residential. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second. So they're going to provide water and sewer?
Poll again?
Yes.
They're going to provide water and sewer to build houses on this land so people can spend their money on all the businesses that are in the city.
It's the only way water and sewer is going to get to that side of that street is to have houses over there. I can tell you that right now because you got to have a mud district to supply it, and they got to have money to pay for it. So, yes, it's a chicken-and-egg thing. It is going to create a water and sewer system for those houses to be built, which are estimated to be over $300,000 each.
And they're still buying that water from us?
That's part of the surface water, the groundwater reduction plan, yes, sir. It's purchased from the city's regional water treatment plant.
Really tied into this thing.
Yes, sir.
And so there was a motion by Councilman Wyatt and a second by Councilman Emery. Council, Mayor Protim Smith has asked for a poll again. Councilman Rulis?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Nope.
No.
Mayor, I sat with Scott and went through a lot of detail to learn about this project. We can pull water and we could do mud, but it's 40, you know, it's far.
Yeah, and costly.
$100 a connection.
One of the important things with the city service area versus utility district is the city for residential and, well, basically, non-commercial areas does not have a reimbursement mechanism for reimbursement of water and sewer expenses, which makes it prohibitive for, from a cost standpoint, for anybody to develop. And even, we're getting with the life of some of these TERSs to the point where it's not even as attractive on the non-residential areas for that reimbursement mechanism. So that's one of the major differences.
Scott, would we?
The expenses would be tremendous.
Would we want to create a reimbursement mechanism now that we know all this?
The reimbursement mechanism, we looked at that in the past, and we actually did do reimbursement for some residential infrastructure for water and sewer. That was not necessarily the best deal for the city of the TERS district out there, and so the policy was adopted under previous city administrations not to provide that for financial reasons.
Yeah.
Not even if you.
Okay.
Which is why, for example, in PD 95 and 96, we created MMDs to handle that area and that mechanism.
Very good. 10E.
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas, amending the general budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2015, and ending June 30th, 2016, transferring various appropriations among accounts, appropriating supplemental revenue to various fund accounts, authorizing the appropriate city officials to take steps necessary to accomplish such transfers, making certain findings, and containing certain provisions relating to the subject.
These are standard annual transfers, and this is the first and final reading, and saved June some time. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have a list of those transactions that we can have?
Are they given to you?
Yeah, they can provide that.
And actually, the exhibit to the ordinance includes the actual transfer.
10E, I think.
Somewhere in here.
All right.
Yeah.
If your computer were like mine, you would have it.
My paper, man, you don't want that.
You knock down trees, man.
Yeah. There's a motion and a second. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries.
Way to go, June. That was pretty good, man.
Yeah, well, yeah. That's why June came back here.
Didn't miss a thing.
His presentations were much shorter here than he were in Sugar Land.
Didn't miss a thing.
A lot fewer questions, right? Yeah, and they understood it here. All right, 11A.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Missouri City, Texas, finding that CenterPoint Energy Houston Electric LLC's application for approval to amend its distribution cost recovery factor and to reconcile docket number 44572 revenues to increase distribution rates within the city of Missouri City should be denied. Finding that the city's reasonable rate case expenses shall be reimbursed by CenterPoint Energy Houston Electric LLC. Finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed is open to the public as required by law and providing notice of this resolution.
See, we'll call before we dig, but don't raise our rates.
Yes.
Understand that?
So moved.
All right. Councilman Wyatt made the motion. Is there a second? They're not going to cut you like this, yeah, I'll say.
I'll say.
Okay.
And this is how you keep them from moving on the rate.
And we're in a co-op, are we not? And all the other members of that co-op are opposing the rate increase as well. We're not out there by ourselves.
Correct.
Yeah. We'll point that out.
The Gulf Coast.
Before they turn the lights out in Missouri City.
I got a meeting this week with them. It's going to be nice.
Yeah. All right. There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
11B.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Missouri City, Texas, granting consent to Sienna Plantation Municipal Utility District Number 10 to annex certain land situated within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city of Missouri City, Texas. Members of council, this is essentially the mud annexing the land that was just.
That just answered his question.
Disannexed in order to.
This is what's providing the water and the sewer.
Correct, in order to pay for the water and sewer.
There a motion?
This is for the annex.
Yes.
This is for the disannexation of the 33.07 acre tract.
Right, right. So moved to that. Well, I just want to make sure that the county tax office will have some water out there.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. Been a motion? Is there a second?
So moved.
I'll say.
Mayor Protim Smith made the motion. Any discussion? Now we'll vote. All those in favor? All opposed? 11C.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Missouri City, Texas, granting consent to Sienna Plantation Municipal Utility District Number 12 to annex certain land situated within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city of Missouri City, Texas. Members of council, this is the 10.96 acres that is just east of the mixed-use development or proposed mixed-use development.
Glad that a municipal district is going to annex it. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Here's if they don't pay in the taxes.
Yeah. Councilman Emery made the motion. Mayor Protim Smith made the second. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Item 12, we're city council announcements. I will say that Wednesday, May 5th, at 10 o'clock, you'll observe National Prayer Day here on the steps of City Hall, along with other cities throughout the country. It's a national prayer day, so if you're around, it's at 10 o'clock. It's a nice ceremony. We have ministers, rabbis, people from all religions here. It's not, it's a nondenominational national prayer day, and Lord knows we need it in our nation today, so be here. Chris, you have anything?
I'll just thank city staff for the State of the City. It was a wonderful event. And just remind people that tomorrow's the last day for early voting. Saturday is Election Day. We have some fine men and women running for office, so please get engaged, please vote.
Jury.
I'd just like to say that I was invited last Thursday night to attend the award presentation by the Minute Change.
Yeah.
It was a great program. They gave out $25,000 in scholarships to students from both Stafford ISD, Stafford MISD, and Fort Bend ISD. It was well-attended, and the students really appreciated, and I found that those guys really do more than just grow vegetables. They grow people, and they invest in young people to grow.
Great organization. Councilman Emery?
Yeah, no.
Nothing?
We, Missouri City Green and Palm and ourselves were at Green Earth Day.
Yeah.
Southminster. What else?
Today.
Today, Kelsey Sebo recognition.
Yeah. Kelsey had their, Kelsey Sebo Foundation had their annual golf tournament at Quill Valley today, had 240 players.
Rain or shine?
It was fine. This organization, this foundation raises over $200,000 a year at this event, and it's one of the largest nonprofit golf tournaments in the city of Houston, and it took both courses to play, so. Great way to showcase our city today and make us some money on a rainy day when no one else would play, probably, so. But just a big thing, they're going to open their new clinic in August down on Highway 6, and they really are wanting to be partners with the city in the future, so I was very impressed by that.